Okay, great.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Cathet Regional District Committee of the Board for December the eleventh, twenty twenty six, our last meeting of this year. And I would acknowledge that the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of along the nations. Directors, you have an agenda in front of you. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to move it, but I think there's an unregistered delegation. We should have the agenda.
I'm aware of the unregistered delegation. They will be called upon what the two registered ones.
Move the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Director. Director Lennox make the question. Seeing no hands, all in favor?
Director Fall has his hand open.
I see you, Director Fall. Thank you.
Muted. You're muted.
No, he's not, no.
Hang on, Andrew, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
You're muted, Director Fall.
He understands now. He's dealing with it here.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, I would like to move an amendment to add a notice of motion regarding a proposed AVICC resolution under new business.
We've actually voted on the resolution, but.
Did we? No, we didn't vote on the resolution yet. I had my hand up. But anyways, that's.
Okay, so, uh, under new business, the notice of motion. Re- a motion for AVICC. Is everyone okay with the amendment? Do you have a revote just in to make the kosher, um, everyone? Approving the agenda in the date? Thank you. Okay, as amended. Uh, there's minutes, November the twenty sixth. Are there errors or omissions? Seeing no hands, a motion to adopt the minutes, please. Okay, brand your drink. Let's talk. Any discussion? All in favor? Harry. Uh, we have two registered delegations and I understand we have an unregistered delegation as well. The first delegation is Staff Sergeant Lee Dyson, who is in the room with us, and you'd like to join us at the table. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, board. Thank you for allowing me to join you this afternoon. Um, I just have a few, um, stats to present and just get on some of the things that have been happening, uh, with our detachment, um, and with sort of some of the crime trends that we we are seeing in our area. Um, calls for service, uh, over the last quarter, we was a small decrease, uh, in calls for service this second quarter, uh, compared to the second quarter of twenty twenty four. Our check well-being calls are, uh, down quite a bit, uh, forty-three percent. However, our mental health act calls are up just a little bit, and sometimes what this is, uh, um, shows the members are just the way that they're quoting the call. So maybe mental health that call, but they're saying that it's just a check well-being or these sorts of things. So sometimes you see a bit of, uh, um, change in the way members are doing it, the way they call the call at the scene. Unspecified assistance, which is calls don't fall into any specific, um, category, are down, uh, thirty-three percent. Missing persons calls, uh, up significantly. Um, I haven't looked into exactly what that is. It's an increase by, but I don't know of that. Um, specifically what that leads to over last year. Uh, persons crimes, some of these are assaults, those sorts of things are down thirty-eight percent, uh, this quarter compared to the same quarter twenty twenty four. Assaults themselves are down, um, from twenty-one to seventeen. Sexual offenses themselves are down from eight to two, which is very, very easy to see. Uh, calls for harassment type calls are down, again, just a couple from the same quarter twenty twenty four. Uttering threats calls, again, these are down by just over half, which is good to see again from the same period in twenty twenty four. Property crime, uh, basically the same, a little bit of a reduction, but nothing, uh. And again, I think we brought this up last year. This is for, or last time I was here, this is for the area, what we call our provincially funded area. Um, this doesn't include City of Powell River itself. Should I cover that up in the beginning? My apologies. Rank and enters, uh, is a bit of an increase there. Again, the numbers are fairly small, so it's not a major increase when you look at the numbers themselves. Um, we had, just to give an idea, we had a rank in there last night, and we already have a person in custody and ready to be dealt with, so we've been pretty effective in dealing with those. Um, theft thunders. Uh, this is any theft that is under five thousand dollars in nature, increased from eleven to seven. Theft from vehicle, um, this is up. It was also up for, um, city as well, um, significant increase there. We are cur- we currently have our crime analyst from the district looking at these numbers, and I expect to have an answer on this either the end of this week from now, or maybe early next week. I'll follow up and find out, see if there's any trends that we can address to try to see what's going on with who may be doing this, or if there's a specific time that we can change our patrols, try to make sure we can address this particular increase. Theft of vehicle shows a hundred percent increase when it goes from two to four. Uh, again, one of those thefts of vehicle, uh, in this particular one, we know was a crime vehicle that was reported later to try to get away from, um, vulnerability for that offense, but it was still reported as a theft of vehicle, and we haven't yet been able to prove what the situation was there, but we know, we just can't prove it. Frauds are up. Um, this, we believe, is a direct result of some online, um, frauds that happened, and there was a bit of a spike. Um, we have been working, we've been trying to get those people access to the Canadian Fraud Centre, to try to deal with some of those. They can be pretty difficult on a local level, because a lot of the, um, callers or the way that these are happening are not local. They're, um, often international. It's gonna be a bit of a challenge for us. Mis shift, uh, down from thirty-four to nineteen. Decrease in that. Offenses for provincial areas. Change there. Weapons offenses from zero to two. Impaired driving, um, slight increase of calls of the quarter, but here to date, they're a bonus. Uh, just to break down for the specific regions and what the changes are, um, savory has a quite a bit of a reduction there, but again, the numbers aren't, um, aren't great. And tax data, uh, we have a reduction there too, and I'll talk about tax data a little bit, uh. So, um, a couple of things that are happening, we have partnered with Project Five Two Nine, uh, for the detachment for our whole area. Uh, there is a media release that still waiting for the translation, so we can get that out. Um, Project Five Two Nine is a, uh, computer app or a phone app where you can register your, uh, bicycle, all the information you need about that. If, uh, unfortunately, if the bike is stolen, you can actually mark it on the app, and it tells everybody in the area to look out for your bike, and shows them a picture. Uh, places that have had this, um, deployed across North America have seen a large decrease in thefts of bicycles, and also a large increase in the recoveries of those bicycles. So we're hoping to have those, uh, results here. We're planning for in January, a couple of, um, events where we can have people bring their bikes and we can help them get, um, this project up and running. Uh, we have a couple of other projects that go along with that, that I can be able to discuss, uh, a little more going down the road. Um, one of the things that is will be of interest is, we had a lengthy investigation, uh, we had a suspect who was stealing undergarments from the complex. Um, we had several different avenues that we were trying to address that, and ultimately we were able to, um, arrest that person, and they've been charged. They have subsequent subsequently left the area, so they're no longer here. Uh, but we wanted to thank the city staff, um, at the complex for their assistance with helping us with that. They were, we couldn't have done it without their assistance, so it was, it was very good. Body worn cameras are now fully deployed in our area, um, and they have been really effective for us. They've been a great tool. So when you're, if you're talking to our members and you see the, um, camera on their chest, if it's a green light, that's a good thing, means they're not recording you. If it's a red light, that means you're logged. Um, and we've used it, it's been useful in a couple of, um, situations already, where to help with, uh, some investigations, trying to determine what happened. We've also found, um, not so far in our area, but in other areas of deploying this, the complaints against members have reduced significantly, and those that do happen are more readily solved, so we're hoping to see that here as well. Um, for Tax Data, uh, one of our members that there has finished his term, and he's departing into Gabriel Island, and his replacement is named and will be here in January. So we should have a very small amount of time, less than two weeks, where we have uh, posted to Tax Data, so that will help resolve that problem. We also have a part-time, um, public servant who is now working in the detachment, so there will be two to three days a week. There will be somebody in the mornings to be able to assist, um, our clientele there, which will help, uh, will help solve that problem. We had a very big issue trying to, trying to hire there, so this was a big bonus for us. So that just started this week. Um, and that's all I have officially. If there's any questions. Answer anything you have.
Yeah, thank you, Staff Sergeant, and I'll throw it open to directors who have questions. Okay, Director Elliott, Director Lennox, and Director Gifford.
Thank you so much. Um, I have just a couple of questions. Um, when we are looking at reading versus provincially funded areas and reporting things like impaired driving, is there, are we recording those for where you're finding them, or where they, on their license plate, they came from?
No, it's where they're, it's one of two things. If they're a reported, um, impaired driver, it's where the report started, so they may have been in the city by the time we got them, but if they were reported south or north of town, then they would be reported as provincial. If it's one of our members locating the person just as part of the patrols, it's where they're stopped.
Okay, so many of the stats around impaired drivers, then they concentrate in the city simply because that's where we're finding more people because we're patrolling there, having our checks stopped there, or?
The bulk of our impaireds that we've had here are members actively on patrol and locating them, not necessarily from reports of those. So I would suggest that the bulk of them, and I'd have to look into it specifically, are, you know, if it's reported as a provincial area, that's where they were stopped, and that's where they were located by the members.
Um, could I have a? Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, the equipment for scanning for expired insurance is, I didn't hear that mentioned. Are we still trying to get that, or?
So I had a discussion with about this yesterday. That's the, um, automated license plate recognition system. Um, we have been working on trying to get that. There has been a bit of an issue, whereas the, the what's called the standing offer for purchase those has been put on hold, um, which has a lot to do with the switch to the new in-car camera system, which has an ALPR system built in. However, it's not quite as robust as the standalone system, so I'm in the middle of discussions about how we're gonna do that, so it's a bit on pause, trying to uh, what I'd like to get the more robust system here, but I may not have that choice, so we're still, I just learned that yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Elliott. Director Lennox.
Thanks, Sharon. Thanks for your report. Um, interesting, north of town, the only increase. I'm just wondering what's going on here, so maybe I have any comments on that, but maybe it's, as you said, where offenses occur versus where people live, so that's interesting. Um, and maybe just as a reminder, do we, do we get, uh, longer-term reports that occurred to me, like, it's interesting to see the quarterly, but you'd probably give us occasionally some, like, maybe yearly, five, ten-year. I was kind of wondering about Area A, of course, but, uh, so maybe any comments on Area A and those longer-term trends, and then, uh, just the follow-up would be, uh, you, I saw an increase, uh, in rural water, or not an increase, but stats on rural water interceptions, so obviously you're out in the lakes and oceans, and is it just the lakes and oceans, or what, what other rural type of, uh, nation would there be that would fall into that category? Those are the two.
So rural would be any of the unorganized areas, typically sort of east of town, when you start to get into the forested areas, up into the valleys, a little city. Um, or any of the areas like outside between, um, the nation and Lund, you were in there, that's sort of a more unorganized area. Uh, and obviously the water would be anything that would be, you know, we patrol, so on the lakes, um, primarily, um, Powell Lake, and then up into the ocean areas within our area, which goes up into the forget the name of it, I apologize.
Desolation Sound?
Desolation Sound. I still, the names from, uh, from Pender Island jump into my head, and I gotta try to remember, I'm not there anymore.
That's interesting. North was the only increase. That was the other verse.
Yeah, um, I don't have a specific as to what sort of led to some of those increases. Um, it's pretty minimal, being the, as to the eleven percent, so I don't know if there's anything, what specifically led to that. I don't break it down for offense, although I can. Um, the presentation would get pretty extensive if I started to do that. Uh, what I'll do, if I see major increases in something, I, either thefts from vehicles, then I would, then I start to break it down, try to figure out something. Uh, as far as the long term, I can get those relatively easy. I don't normally look, um. Crime trends tend to be relatively short-lasting, so, um, you know, to see what happened ten years ago compared to now. They help with trying to determine resource levels, but as far as, you know, reacting to, to issues as they come up, i.e., for example, we have the issue with the, um, drugs that were causing us a problem, that's a sort of in the moment, trying to address those.
Interesting, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Lennox actually asked my question about the long-term trends, because, uh, from like the very high level we are, we're looking at, you know, how can we advocate for different changes, and that's where, when we see like a five or ten-year trend, it's, it's a lot more helpful, and, you know, this is, this is great information, though sometimes, you know, one year will be an outlier that seems like, oh, my goodness, there's this massive change, but then when we take a look at the long term, it's like, okay, there's, there's a reason for this. One off, so, um, thank you for already answering my question before I asked it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have one quick question, I guess, about the Chixita staffing. So one of the officers is leaving at the end of this year, and there's a new one arriving this is January?
Yes. Yeah, that member has completed his three-year post. He's going off to Gabriel Island, where he'll do another three years, um, and then a member is coming in from West Shore detachment, and this will be his first, uh, isolated duration post.
Is it hard to recruit? Or the more remote locations like that?
Yes and no. I mean, there is a group of members that really enjoy working those and tend to sort of go from one to the other. One of the issues that we had that I discovered was that, um, each detachment, each RCMP area has a code, so that you can go into, if, you know, for your career planning and say, I want to go to Powell River, and it has this code. What we discovered was that when they amalgamated Tax Data and Powell River detachments, they got rid of the Tax Data code, even though it was still a place you could get both into. So members were having a very hard time trying to say, I want to go to Tax Data, because they may not necessarily want to come to Powell River. We've changed that now, so we'll fix that. Once we did an advertisement, an internal advertisement, we had a couple people right away saying, yes, I want to go there, but I couldn't figure it out. So for Tax Data specifically, it has been a challenge. Hopefully, we've addressed that. Um, but for other areas that are smaller, typically, there's a, there's a group of people that like to go to those and, and sort of like that experience.
Thank you. So many numbers down. Any other questions? Not seeing any good hands, but I want to thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for having me. Appreciate it.
Okay, our second, um, registered delegation is Rob Ringman from BC Transit, it's virtual.
Yes, there it is.
Yeah, oh, there he is.
Good, uh, good afternoon, everyone. How is everyone doing today? Um, yeah, Rob Ringman, I'm with the Senior Manager of Government Relations with BC Transit. I'm joined today by Adriana McMullen, who's one of our senior transit planners. Um, and we're here to present an overview of the Transit Future Service Plan, uh, that we have finalized for the Powell River and, uh, Cathet Regional District. So I think Adriana is gonna just share her screen. Um, while she's doing that, I'll just give kind of a bit of a quick preamble, because we did do this presentation in front of Powell River Council. We had a little bit more time than the delegation time today, so we will try to get through the material, um, the pertinent materials best we can. Uh, just know that we can work with staff and come back and do a further, deeper presentation to, uh, to the board if they, uh, if they so desire. But the information was provided to you in the agenda package, so, uh, Adriana, if you can just skip forward to the next slide. So, yeah, so the Transit Future, um, Service Plan really put together, um, by our planning team, and, and Adriana, I have to give her full kudos for, for putting this plan together and doing a lot of the work. But if you remember me presenting before, um, how we, how we come to put this plan together is through pretty extensive stakeholder and public engagement. So we not only did online surveys, we came into the community and conducted open houses, um, in, over multiple days within the community, um, really to get a feel for what people, A, think of the transit system, B, what their, um, kind of hopes and dreams for the transit system are. And then Adriana has the great job of putting all of this great input together with a lot of the data we have on performance, and try to put together a cohesive plan. So, um, I'm not gonna go through the presentation overview. It's all there. Uh, if you go to the next slide, Adriana. Um, so basically, yeah, that's fine. You can. No, we can, we can keep going forward on that. That's fine, Adriana, so. So, yeah, like I said, um, this will be kind of the last slide I speak to, but as we know, the Transit Future Plan is kind of our strategic plan. It's the high-level strategic document that then we start to break down into manageable chunks, that where you'll see me present to the board on kind of expansion initiatives. So the strategic plan is the big, is the big plan, that we then kind of break down into smaller, more manageable, uh, chunks or priorities that then I can present to the board with costing, um, to see what improvements we can make within the transit system. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Adriana, and she will walk you through some of the highlights of that plan.
Great, thank you, Rob. Um, so, yes, Rob has given you a bit of an overview of the role of the transit plan. And just to give you a sense of where it fits in, we conduct these strategic planning initiatives. Uh, every five to seven years, we try to, in our communities, depending on changes within the communities, some communities are very stable. And so this is following up on the, uh, twenty fifteen plan that was conducted for, uh, the service. Um, and the new format is a slide, slide format, a little more user-friendly. Um, a valuable piece to consider in terms of when we grow services, it's not just as easy as adding more trips. If you're gonna add more service hours and types of service, you're going to usually need more buses, because the buses are only allowed a certain, to run a certain amount of hours on them. And then the number of buses you have in your fleet also determines your infrastructure. Likewise, these are also constraints, and this is why planning ahead is really, really important for transit systems. Um, the strategic plan priorities are only one set of factors that we consider when we're making, um, improvements to your system. The other aspects are the operational needs and the performance. So an example of operational needs is on time. Transit is absolutely and completely locked to, um, buses being on schedule. And if they start getting off schedule, we have to look at what we need to do to get them back on schedule, and often that means a little bit of extra resources. Um, it's how busy or how crowded routes are, so we want to make sure we're not passing people up on existing service before we grow new, new service. Um, now, in terms of how the proposals are implemented, uh, Rob alluded to this, that we have a three-year cycle that we work within, and basically every year you have an opportunity to sign a new agreement um, that contains initiatives from the plan that have been agreed to by the local government partners. And if we sign, if you sign, then it advances to consideration by the province, um, or it gets included in our budget for the province, the ask, the transit budget ask, and if it's not signed, then that won't proceed. Uh, and then we find out when the budget is announced, if we're able to proceed with, um, any expansion or improvements. Uh, so this is, uh, some of the information around the engagement. We conducted two phases of engagement. This is the summary from, um, the first phase of engagement. Oh, oops, hang on a sec. I may have the wrong presentation. Oh, dear. I, I've started with the wrong one. I apologize. I need to very quickly change screens. I don't know, Rob, if you were able to keep going on a topic that you're.
Um, yeah, or I could, I have my presentation, or I could just take over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll stop. Sure. Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna stop sharing.
I don't know how to do that. Oh, got it.
Okay. And let me just put this in presentation mode. Uh, there we go, right here. Okay.
Great, yes. So, um, some of the influences in your system are the performance. So since the twenty fifteen plan, the ridership has risen by almost a multiple of three, so two-point-eight times increase in ridership. You've also seen an increase of seventy-one percent in service hours since that time. Next slide, please. And, yes, this is the engagement piece. So when we did our phase one engagement, we separated the results between the rural participants and the urban participants. The information you see here is based on the rural participation. The number one ask for most of the community members in the, uh, Cathet Regional Service Area is for more frequency and also service that operates later on weekdays. Um, the bar chart on the left also indicates based on, also indicates that more people in the community see themselves needing transit more often in the future. That was a question that we asked. Uh, and, um, yeah, next slide. And then this is some of the data that we have for your system, and this might actually be quite interesting to you. We have new technology that helps us count and consider ridership patterns, um, in a more detailed fashion than we used to. So the chart on the left shows the average boardings per day that a route operates on the weekdays only. The blue bars are Route twelve, the yellow bars are Route fourteen, out to Lund, and the purple bars are Route thirteen. I've moved thirteen over to the end because it only operates one day per week. Um, and so you can see that the ridership on the twelve and the fourteen have, uh, uh, an increase in the summertime. Um, it's probably not surprising, given the outdoor recreation opportunities in the regional district areas. Uh, and then the charts that are over on the right-hand side are a metric that the transit industry uses, that's, um, average boardings per hour. And that is basically for every hour of service that we have on the road, how many people are getting on the bus. And so, again, you can see that there is a modest increase in the summertime. And then below that is how things compare by day of the week, and Route fourteen is interesting because we can see that on Sundays, the Route fourteen, uh, actually does quite well, uh, when it's running. That's the summertime. Um, so that's, that's something that I took with me, and you'll see where that comes in, in the next slides. Move forward. Great. Um, so some of the other considerations we have is where the people live and where the routes go. You actually have very good alignment between where the routes go and where the people live, especially if we consider the on-request buffer zone that is in your system. Next slide, please. Uh, and then the other piece of in- influence for this plan, which is absolutely critical, were the outcomes of people's responses to phase two of the engagement. So phase two was when we actually took concepts out to the community and asked for their input on what they thought, and folks who are served by Route twelve, which is the route that goes down to Stillwater and down to the ferry, and serves the majority of the population of the regional district. Um, there's really strong preferences to fill in the Thursday, because right now that, none of the buses other than the thirteen operate on Thursdays. So they're very, very strongly in favor of that. The next interest, uh, was for service on Sundays. And a lot of, um, enthusiasm around the upcoming expansion for the Route thirteen that was approved in a last year. And there was a little bit less clarity around the Route fourteen, the Lund route, in terms of what people wanted to see. Um, more service, yes, but what might be the best fit is a little bit up in the air, and we may do a little bit more consultation when that comes up. The biggest takeaway for me was that, um, about eighty percent of the people in the community were not aware that the bus would actually deviate off the route to come and pick them up. So that is something we need to work on. Uh, next slide, please. So that is something we need to work on. Uh, next slide, please. And so, yeah, the highlights for the plan is that we're not going to be looking at changing any of the routes. They provide good coverage for what you need. We see the future changes to your system focusing on adjustments and improvements to the service levels. So that would be days of the week, um, and how often the buses go. So you can see here the the on-request coverage area that's shown. Next slide, please. And yeah, here are the service priorities. And so we've broken them out into um number priorities. And the top of the list is the Route thirteen improvements that are scheduled to happen this coming year in twenty twenty-six. And that means that the Thursday schedule that currently operates will be matched on Tuesdays. And then following that, um, we also are recommending filling in the Thursday service on the Route twelve Stillwater. Uh, and that's something that is in alignment with the agreements that you uh staff signed earlier this year. So we're looking forward to hopefully um hopefully the province approves it and we're able to advance with that. And then further down the line, uh, looking at some opportunities for improvements to land. I would like to maybe do a little bit of more engagement around the land piece about how exactly we distribute those hours, because we can load it all onto making consistent weekday service. Or we can split the difference and have some better Thursdays or have Thursday service all year long and couple that with maybe some increases during the summer period, because we've seen that the summer period is actually really busy on uh on the land route. Um, and then further to this, we also have some infrastructure and information priorities uh that I won't get into um too much. Uh, but we do have some extra slides about the land piece um that I think are pretty self-explanatory. If there's questions, I'm happy to explain that in a little bit more detail. Um, a lot of the informational, if we can just skip through these, Rob. Thank you. Um, and then on the information side, if we go ahead one, one of the really big pieces is about uh raising awareness of the on-request option for the rural transit community um and residents of the Cathet Regional District.
Adriana, I'm just going to interrupt you for one quick sec. And I'm for doing that, just to get director's agreement to carry on past our ten minutes. Thank you. They agreed, so please carry on.
Perfect. Thank you. We're so close. Um, so, yeah, I think that that to me really stood out as a critical piece. Um, when we we asked this in our phase two survey and almost nobody knew that there was a non-request opportunity available for them. Um, so we would like to explore some creative ways to help remind residents that this opportunity does exist, so that they're able to take advantage of it and know that the service is available to them, even if they don't happen to live exactly on the route or next to a bus stop. Um, and then I think that more or less wraps it up. Yes, that was my my Zoom version. Um, if there's questions.
There's a lot of information in here, so I want to thank you very much for your presentation. Show it open to directors for questions. Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just quickly, I I think you answered most of the, you know, from Arielle out and on there, um. Have some comments. I I was going to say the same thing, probably a little more consultation with folks and always about a balance and it's a no-brainer just off the top of my head that in the summertime, a little more uh, you know, later service in the summer encourages people to be able to come to town and take advantage of the city and other areas activities, get back home, but vice versa, people from other areas coming north. Appreciate that part of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Lennox. Um, I have a quick question about Route thirteen. Uh, when will the second bus be starting? I heard January, then I think I heard April, so.
Yeah, I thank you, uh, Director McCormick, um, through the chair, which is you. Um, so we are intending, so we do have a large uh fixed route expansion also planned for the Powell River um city routes as well as a on-demand, the B C Transit on-demand service that we're implementing. So we're going to implement all three, including the Tex-Ada expansion um in March. Right now, it's uh scheduled for March fifteenth. Um, I think I communicated that the last time I was here. So uh what we're trying to do is make sure we have all the synergies of being able to implement all of those changes all at the same time and just keep it consistent for the customers in the area. We had originally, you are correct, we originally were hoping to um to implement that expansion in January, but we have kind of pushed it to March fifteenth just to make sure that we can have all of those pieces together and and make one large change for the transit system. Um, and then as Adriana mentioned, we do have in the um in the queue right now those hours uh for improvements to Route twelve. So hopefully if those get approved by the province this year in the budget, then next year we'd be looking to uh to bump up those hours on the Route twelve. And then again, through some dialogue and and engagement this year, um, the following year, we'd look for a little bit more improvement something to to land.
Thank you for that information. Um, will you be um putting out the advertising or some information? Because there's Tex-Ada people that are expecting this to start in January, so I don't want people to be disappointed. Um, will you be notifying them through, like, an AdNeXpress lines or whatever means you have?
Yeah, I think I think what we could do is we could reach out to um even um such as Mr. uh Galinsky, who I see is on the call today, and just make sure that we get some sort of communication out to make sure that those timelines of of March are are properly communicated.
Thank you very much. Um, other directors, Director Dispony?
Well, thank you very much for coming today. Um, we had some correspondence oh, a few months ago in relation to uh lack of transit service between, I believe, Caribou Avenue in the city limits and Centennial Drive. And what I'm hearing on this presentation that there is not going to be any bus service provided to that underserviced area of Area B, it's not part of the plan? Is that a correct understanding?
Um, through the chair, uh, wh- what we would be able to do is um reconfirm the boundaries of the on-request service and clarify where people would need to be for the bus to come and pick them up.
I see a Mr. Devereaux with his hand.
Mr. Devereaux.
Yes, uh, through the chair, I can uh let the committee know that I'd met with uh the lady who had had made that request and talked her through how to do the uh uh request off limit, and she was quite satisfied with that and was going to uh call the number and make that arrangements for her pickups.
Yeah. Um, that that solves uh my concern, because uh there there's a fairly large and more higher population density along that part between uh Centennial Drive and uh Caribou, which is, it's not part of the main route. It goes through the valley. So just uh keep an eye out. That's it. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Director Lennox. Director Elliot.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Rooma, and um. Of me, sorry, not good at names. Um, I know I brought this up before, but I still have no idea when we might be able to plan for stops to the new Resource Recovery Center, which is a a regional district service. It's, so the regional district used to have um recycling stations within the city that were transit-friendly. Um, and now they've taken those out and and want people to go to the the whole city to go to the Resource Recycle Station that is between Willingham and Bee. Currently, the only bus I think that really runs on that one is the one that goes to London. The frequency wouldn't be good enough for the city. Um, and we talked about how we would need to do some planning for that, but I don't know where it fits in your schedule for address it, like having the consultations required. And and maybe it's a matter of just slightly extending the on-demand boundary. I'm not entirely sure. And uh I know you don't have that answer today, but I just, maybe what you could tell me is how that will get uh thought out and when.
Maybe I could, through the chair, I can take first stab at that, Director Elliot. So yes, and thank you very much for bringing that up um in this forum, as well as I know you had mentioned it when we presented to Powell River. My understanding is this is a fairly new change in the region. Um, we've made note of it, and maybe Adriana can speak to it a little bit more. But I think if we, I think what we want to do is we want to get these um system changes in place for March. And then we can kind of, we can look to see, is there some number one cost-neutral changes that we could make that maybe commentate that, maybe that is expanding the on-demand service? Um, and if not, then we need to, again, the beauty of the way the system works is every year we can kind of replan. If we're going to do some engagement on the uh on the land route uh as well, we can maybe include some of that in some of that engagement to see if we can make it um if we need to put some service hours towards it, that we can make any of the adjustments that we need. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. Um, we've got it noted. Um, and we'll definitely try to see what we can do to come up with a solution for that uh for that challenge.
So you want me to ask you again after March?
Yeah, I think I think that's a that's a fair the fair point. I think we've got a lot on our plate to get the March uh implementations put into place. But absolutely, once we're done with uh with that, um, those changes and those service improvements, you know, we're on to those next priorities, and it sounds like this one may be one that rises uh in terms of uh the need of the community.
Thank you so much. And if I may add a little bit through the chair, um, one of the observations I have is that access to the new center is off of um Ministry of Highways right-of-way. And so we would be needing to collaborate with uh Mott to enable uh bus stops. Um, Mott is usually not a fan of putting people in situations where they're crossing highways, depending on what the speed limit is at that point. So just a caution that we we have to, you know, make sure that we're able to um be safe and and satisfy um, you know, their concerns as well in terms of introducing bus stops along the highway. Um, you'll notice that Marine, for instance, has almost only has like one or two stops even through town site. Um, and again, it's because it's of the highway right-of-way concerns.
Anyone who hasn't yet asked a question?
I just want to respond to that.
All right, go ahead, Director Elliot.
Thank you so much.
Just put your hands.
I just wanted to point out that the Resource Recycle Center has a driveway in quite a ways before you actually get to the facility, which is not on the highway. And so if you were using something like on-demand, the drop-off and pickup could be closer to the actual facility where you pull off and then turn around and come back out. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be on the highway.
Director Dispony?
Uh, yes, I'm just have a question, and I'm not necessarily sure if it's B C Transit that can answer, maybe our staff, because I understand the uh Resource Recovery Center is a regional service, but it's inside city limits. And I think the presentation today is regarding the rural paratransit service, which the focus of that service is providing service to the uh participants in the electoral areas. It's not so much about like municipal connection to, say, a regional district. Is that a is that a correct understanding? Is it's kind of separate things rural paratransit is about? Getting the transit out to the rural area and Resource Recovery Center is kind of a kind of a different thing. Is that a correct understanding?
No, I would say that people from the rural areas may want to access the Resource Recovery Center, but I'll leave it up to B C Transit Authority to fill us in further. Adriana or Rob?
Yeah, through the chair, I I think at the end of the day, we want, if if there's a priority for local government, to find a solution to a community problem, and transit can be a part of that solution. Then we want to work with all levels of government to make that happen. The uh, you know, wh- whether it's the route um, the route out to land, or whether it's on-demand, I think what we want to do is make sure we find the most efficient way to service that need within the community. So we'll take that back, uh, we'll do some some engagement, we'll do some um some for some further consultation and uh and come back to um both local governments with what that solution may be or what the options for that solution may be. And at that time, local governments can decide what they feel is the most appropriate response.
That sounds great. Thank you. So I'm not seeing any further hands, so I'd like to thank you both for your presentation and appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much. Look, uh, look very forward to the changes coming up in March, so appreciate the support support of transit.
March fifteenth is on my calendar already, so um, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We have one um unregistered delegation, and I'd like to welcome Ellen Gould and Alison Topley. I got that right. Um, from the Energy Democracy B C, their organization. You have ten minutes.
All right. Hey, um, we've sent an update on the what's been happening over this application by a River Energy Inc. for a thirty-year export ex- on application. And I'll just review the highlights. We do have requests, so somebody can make sure I don't talk out the clock here. Um, so uh, this is a very, very um unusual application for a thirty-year export that however would be setting a precedent, because no private company before was ever applied for a thirty-year license. So maybe because of that unusual nature, or maybe because we on a picked up a storm here locally with so much um opposition from the three local governments, from January Commerce, seventeen hundred submissions, fifteen hundred people on opposition. We've been very busy as an organization, so we collected um yeah, fifteen hundred names on a petition in opposition in three weeks. Very busy. So um the upshot of it is that the regulator, the Canada Energy Regulator, has decided that they're not going to decide, like usually they kind of rubber-stamp the stuff, and they would have already decided normally it would be over. Um, so they decided to give it no fixed deadline for decision and maybe public hearings, which would be great. So we will probably be coming back to you if they announce those hearings. Um, so our Energy Inc. in response to what the regulator asked them, um, the regulator asked them why they needed a thirty-year license, and they said that was going to be they get a contract in the U S, legal money. Um, they also said that they needed to make repairs. Um, but when the regulator asked them what repairs they planned to do, they refused to tell them. So, um, there might be pushback from the regulator on that, because that's a whole justification along the length of the term. Um, the other key thing was that they refused to tell the regulator what the price or let the regulator share, excuse me, share with B C Hydro and the price. So uh, the legislation says that you can export as long as you give fair market access. So someone locally wanting to buy the power should be allowed to um meet, match the price. Um, so B C Hydro has uh offered to buy the power, but then they're in this guessing game. Unless they know what the price is, and how did they do that? So that was kind of an unusual pushback from the company again, that they're telling the regulator that they cannot share that price. So is that clear to people, what the whole fair market access thing sounds about? It sounds quite good. Other things that they said, P R E I said in its in its response to the regulators, they said that their negotiations with B C Hydro are over. Um, they won't engage any further. Um, they said that the combination might still buy the power on the condition that the U S buyer, um, that and that it's okay with the U S buyer. So that's kind of, from our perspective, that's not a very realistic scenario. Um, that's why would an American buyer, who has a fixed contract, give that up? Um, the other thing that they're saying is if a local buyer wanted to buy the power, they would have to pay the U S prices. And that's despite what they pointed out in their own submission, that it's more expensive to export power, because they have to um pay what's called the wheeling fee to get it to to the U S. So they have to pay uh B C Hydro for the transmission. The energy, but they're still saying, if it's a local buyer, they have to match the U S price. So. Okay. Um, the R E I has raised the issue of what they could do to achieve better relations. Um the R E I has raised the issue of what they could do to achieve better relations with the community. Um so there have been meetings between the rate pairs associations and with the local M L A. And they've raised it in both of those meetings. So now may be a rare window of opportunity for. Local governments to say what they would like to see in the way of community benefits from, from the company. So what we're proposing. This is sort of in the way of a motion. Um that the different regional district invite the Commonwealth Nation. And the city of Powell River to a special C three meeting. To discuss, one, what community benefits should be expected from Powell River Energy Inc. And two, what are common interests to um bring forward in the event that hearings are scheduled?
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, how they do.
Yeah, yeah, you're fine, you're fine. Um what we'd like to see is a meeting involving the regional district, Tlaman Nation and the city. Um to discuss community benefits and um. The common issues that we have, I got that right?
Yes, and in the event that there's hearings, what common interests, you know, what common approach might be taken? I don't know if if it's too high a hill to climb to get a common position, that at least it could be discussed. Because the company is asking and so it puts. It would be best if it was the elected representatives responding.
Okay, thank you. I have um other questions, Director Gisborne and Director Elliott. Director Gisborne, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um so what I'm hearing is a request um for the regional district to invite, you know, along and. And play the city. And I, my question is, is this request in alignment with the motion? That was passed, I believe, back in September and for everyone, I believe the motion was, this is when we had a U B C M. Uh the board directs staff to submit a letter to the commission of the Canada Energy Regulator. Now positioned to power our energy ink application for an electricity export permit supporting the Tlaman Nation's position. And requesting that all power generated by the P R E I facilities in the Kethet Regional District be available for local use to be. On lot four fifty in the city of Powell River and or within the Kethet Regional District. And that the letter includes the desire for development of a regional trust or similar model. To share in a portion of the revenue generated from any export of electricity. And that the letter impresses upon the commission of the Canada Energy Regulator a duty to notify and consult with local governments. On applications within their region. So is is my understanding your, your ask is. Should meet with the partners and discuss the motion that we've already endorsed?
Let's say through the chair?
No, that's not what we're asking. We're asking for a broader vision. On what might be expected of the company. Uh given this critical moment where they're seeking a permit, there's. Quite a lot of local opposition and so they may be more open to doing things like. Leaning up the driftwood on Loas Lake, no? Don't want to suggest what you might ask for. I think that would be, so it's to look at this as an opportunity to engage with, with the company. And then secondly, these hearings, what you might say, so the, the whole input. To the regulator over the application, that part of it was finished on October nine. Now the hearing process will be something different.
And so it, yeah, so it, it's not limited to the motion because we've also talked about the potential of future trusts or something like that.
Sure.
So not as, not as narrow, but broader in general.
Thank you, Director Gisborne. Director Elliott?
Thank you, Chair.
Good, really.
Thank you, Ellen. Um I guess what I wanted to know is. Um what the, what kind of motion could we do now to staff to help us? Move forward in making a decision about this as.
For C A O?
I'm looking at the C A O, but he can tell me, tell me where we should ask. I'll let him tell me how, who, who that's to.
Through the chair. Typically, we recommend that you do not make the motions immediately. Uh to give yourself some time to digest everything. There wouldn't be any problem in bringing this forward as a notice of motion to discuss it in an upcoming meeting. Unless it's time sensitive, then you may want to consider a motion similar to the one that's been proposed. That would be my advice to you. Either postpone so you can make some time to digest, if there's time sensitivity, then you get ready.
I just have a follow up from Ellen. You, are you aware of a time sensitivity? Do you think we should get this done by any particular time?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to be have a position, like they're already asking this stuff. And people, like our local M L A was put on the spot. Already, so the, the company is already asking these questions. So to have, to have a discussion sooner than later, right? And then we have no idea when the hearings might land, so they might land in January. We just don't know.
Okay, may I, may I add?
Through the chair, but I think the position of all the local governments is weakened if. The R E I asks. What we mean and what we want and nobody knows after there's been such strong opposition. Say, well, what do you want? I think the more there can be a unified response to that across the community, the stronger our position as a community will be.
Thank you for that comment. C A O?
Uh through the chair, I'm gonna remind the board as well that. As good as the recommendation may be for the C three forum. We do right now have a ton of obstacles in getting all three. Local governments into one room. So on top of that. Not use or. Make then comments as a little expression, would be like hurting fats. What I might recommend, if you're considering this. Is suggest that. Chair, the mayor or acting mayor of the day and the hagus meet. It would probably quite more, probably more simpler for them to get a time and date established than it would. Try to get. We some people together in the same room on a quarter.
For the motion to ask staff to come back with. Um options to consider for. This request, the outline in that it's not making a decision about this, but rather asking for a little bit of help. With options on how we move forward. Would that be out of line?
You?
Through the chair, I thought I heard there was time was of the essence. And by the time you get that report, it's not going to be until January sometime. Then past January before you can get together and have a meeting with the other local government.
We're running out of time before Christmas to have a meeting to do a motion at all, is my concern. This is our last meeting.
The chair, that's why I suggested maybe just. Just that the chair, the mayor and the hagus get together for a question.
And you think we should do that here or the later, the later meeting? Why don't I do a notice of motion today for the later meeting?
You, you can make a motion here and bump it, roll it to the, the later today.
Okay, so if it, it um pleases the group, I could make a, the motion that um. Our C A O has suggested, or we could wait till after question period.
Okay, well, I have one more speaker on the speakers list, so let's um go to Director Southcott and then we can decide after that. After further speakers. Director Paul, did you hear any?
No, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. And also. Your suggestions that have uh resulted in just this discussion. Appreciate the C A O's suggestions. So my question is, the, I was aware some time ago, my knowledge is a bit dated, that. The um P R E I was going to the B C Court of Appeal. To challenge the ruling that it was, uh that it is, uh the utility has already happened and does that have anything to do with? The rest of this, their application to C E R, is there any relationship between those two?
We have no, this is like behind the corporate veil. We don't know what their strategy is and whether or not they're related. The B C, you see regulation of P R E I is. It's just, it's too complicated in terms of, of the act and how that would impact an export license. Just, it's an absolute don't know. We've asked, we've asked the people who should know and they don't know. So uh I would just add on the whole issue of, I know that. B C meetings are challenging. Um I just, as a reminder that this has unified the community. And that the regional district and the city of Powell River both supported common submission. So this was. If there's gonna be unity on anything, maybe it could be.
Did you want to offer?
Oh, yes, yes, we would be, we would be thrilled, offer any kind of assistance in terms of. What, what B C Hydro does in the way of community benefits, what. Uh only based on us does, um what um Brookfield does in other jurisdictions. In the way of community benefits. So we would be happy to, to be of assistance.
Thank you. I have to direct to the next next.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for your presentation. You know, timing is funny. I was uh about to meet our local M P for things around Area A, but also one of the things that came up in discussion is. You know, my past and present employment with the, you know, uh the, the legacy of, of the mill and um. You know, so this particular subject came up and he asked me what people thought about this and um. So I was just about to sort of uh engage with other people on this at different levels. Uh we're about to meet with our M L A. Neil soon and again, this is a very timely uh discussion. So I think anything we can do to. Again, I think it's smart to put maybe the chairs, the hagus, um the M L A and the M P, they all know what the subject is. The goals, I think, are pretty clear, right? I think. Uh what we talked about, I'll just let you know is, there's a, there's. Everybody I've ever talked to thinks there should be an ability for a balance for the owner of the asset. The uh First Nation that has clear, uh you know, intent and stewardship, et cetera, and opportunities. Uh than the local community to benefit, like simple, right? So I think, uh I appreciate what the intent of this group is trying to do is say. It's time for us to put together because what do we ask when people come before us? We say, what's your ask? And so they're saying like, um it's time for us to, to narrow that definition and I think we can. And put these folks together and be timely about it because uh whether or not the application to the Utilities Commission, I believe they actually failed in that. To remove themselves, but I, I stand to be corrected. It's kind of irrelevant. They've made this application. Got the extension, appreciate that, didn't know that. And I agree that we should. Get our, our leaders together. I think everybody's agreed again is to our intent about mutual benefit. This is a long application impacts past what I'm done, I think, I hope and uh and and generations, right?
So are you making a motion then that our, our chair meet with the hagus?
I'd, I'd like to support that. I, I haven't defined it in writing. Um I've got a potential motion here that I could read and.
No, okay.
This is a potential, we can adjust that the board expresses intent to meet with the Tlaman Nation, City of Powell River to engage in collaborative discussions. Regarding the P R E I application to the Canada Energy Regulator, including but not limited to the motion adopted on. September twenty third, twenty twenty five. And kind of encompasses what we've already been talking about.
Thank you, zero seconder for that motion, um Director Southcott.
And I appreciate any other adjustments.
Discussion on the motion on the table. Director Gisborne and then Director Elliot.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I have a lot in my mind, a lot to say, but I'm gonna keep it short. When we were at U B C M, we found out about all the stuff that was going on, big things, two power of energy, uh sorry. Energy for Democracy B C for raising such awareness. And I support this motion because. It's building off of a motion that this board has already adopted. And the board adopted the motion back in U B, uh U B C M. And it covers things like the development of a regional trust, but it's also about supporting Tlaman's position. As things have changed since the U B C M, I'm not entirely up to speed on what is Tlaman Nation's current position. And I think that this motion will help us get a better understanding so that we're all on the same page. And and I have to echo what I've been hearing around the community. And I also kind of have to thank Brookfield for bringing this community together and opposition to their application. It's like, I've been kind of amazed to see people of all political. Rights going, no, this is important and this is uh, you know, the hydroelectric dams and the power generation are part of, you know. When the mill was created a hundred years ago, the mill's dead, the dams are still there. And you know, there, there needs to be some kind of community benefit. And I think it would be incredibly beneficial that we all get on the same page. I think a lot of us already are, but to get a clarification on what our positions are and what possibilities there are to move forward together. Thank you, Chair. I'm in total support of this.
Thank you, Director Gisborne and Director Elliott, you are next, and Director Brander, and I'll put myself on the list.
Okay, Director Elliot. So um I just wanted to make sure that this motion was consistent with what our C A O suggested. As far as the heads of, of the groups getting together. Uh currently, the mayor is on vacation and so our, our acting mayor is, over the city is, is. Sounds redoubt. So is, is the motion as worded consistent with what the C A O thought was the best path forward? My, my words are very.
I think we get it, yeah. Through the chair, could you repeat it so we know what the rule? Sure, I have uh sent it to the corporate officer who's working remotely there, so we, I don't know if we can display that corporate officer. I know you're on mute there.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I don't have it uh printed out. If you give me a little bit of time, I can read it again for the committee if that's desired.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, um and I think that what we're wanting to do is say that the committee recommend to the board that the board expresses its intent. To meet with the Tlaman Nation, the city of Powell River, uh to engage in collaboration. Discussions regarding P R E I app, the P R E I application to the Canada Energy Regulator. Including but not limited to the motion adopted September twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Yes, and thank you for the reminder. We're a committee.
Did that stand empowered that the C A O, I mean, the, the chair, mayor and it's.
Uh I think that was the intent here. It just hasn't been added in. Is that correct, Director Lennox?
Yes, thank you.
And so what I'm suggesting is if we need an amendment to make it more clear, we should do that now before voting on. Or if the motion is fine the way it is, then I'm fine.
Okay, I have um Director Brander, then myself.
Thanks, Chair. My only concern is that I think it should be chairs, the chair, mayor, hagus and the C A O's organizations.
Okay, corporate officers.
Thank you, um that would, I think that was the intent. Was that the intent? It says that the board expresses it intent to meet, but for its chair to meet with the Tlaman Nation hagus and the city of Powell River. Mayor. Uh to engage in collaborative discussions, was that, would that amendment be appropriate?
That's fine. And to speak to Director Brander's concerns, any other relevant, you know, staff that are required. I mean, we don't want to make it too onerous. If the C A O's are required or available, that's, and that's appropriate. You know, I think we understand the intent of the motion is. If the C A O's are required or available, that's, and that's appropriate, you know, I think we understand the intent of the motion is get the simplest amount of leadership in the, in the room to start a discussion and, and then they'll know how to move ahead.
Thank you, that I would support.
Do we need an amendment, are we, are, are we good?
Thank you through the Chair, if the committee all agrees that, that, um, that is okay, those words that I said, adding those in, you don't need to have an amendment, that could be the main motion.
Is, is everyone in agreement?
Thank you for that work.
Yeah, nods and thumbs up, so yes. Um, I had myself on the speakers list only to say that I think it's important that we move forward on this. It's, it's, it's a time when you have to kind of dig your heels into the sand and say we're standing up for what we believe, and I think this is one of those times, so um, yes, I, I hope the motion passes and, um, that you have some positive things to report back to us. That's all I have to say, so, anyone else before we vote? Seeing no hands, all in favor of the recommendation? Any opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, um, for your appearance here, Director Gisborne, you had a second comment?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna move that the previous motion be elevated to today's board meeting.
Oh, good idea, thank you.
Second.
Seconded, right, uh, any debate? Seeing not all in favor? Any opposed, carried, so that will be decided on this afternoon. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, we are now back to the agenda, there is no unfinished business, no correspondence or business arising um, from that, so report is eight point one, um, Sunshine Coast Tourism. Um, Director Brander.
Move the recommendation.
Thank you, your recommendations are moot, Sir Secunder.
Okay.
Director Gisborne, thank you. Um, to speak to the recommendation on the floor, Director, well, Brander made it, so let you go first and then Gisborne. Okay, Director Brander.
Okay, thank you, um, I think receiving the tripore is the best way to go about it. Um, I don't want to invest any money in the project right now because the estimated cost for this thing would be two hundred and thirty-two million dollars, which half would have to come out of the local pockets, and I don't think anybody is excited about that concept right now. Having the information is great, but I don't wanna go any further with it at this point.
Thank you Director Brander, Director Gisborne, then I'll put myself on the list.
I concur with all the comments of Director Brander, um, their, the report was great, yeah. In alignment with the concerns I raised when we first saw this proposal. Um, and, you know, two hundred and thirty-two million dollars is a lot of money, uh, but when I think about it, it'll, even if we did go this way, probably be even more than that, so, I'm.
That's in today's dollars, then construction isn't gonna happen. So, um, I had myself on the list and then I'll call on Director Elliott, um, just to say that I also support the recommendation. Um, this plan has been around now for about five years, it's a really awesome plan, if only it came with a source of funds, four million dollars a kilometer is pretty rich. Um, in the times that we're in, uh, to, to contemplate that kind of funding, but I think it's a great goal and having this, you know, kind of, uh, duly filed and noted, um, informs us that this plan is around and, um, uh, we may have another opportunity to address it in some other way in the future, but for now, that's the right thing to do. Director Elliott.
Thank you, Chair, um, I think accepting your report is a good idea, I think having it, um, on a shelf that we could um, use to support, uh, applications for grants or some such for small sections, making sure the sections actually are gonna connect to each other down the road, um, and things like that is, is an excellent thing to do. We, we simply don't have the money to implement any of it at this point in time, but that's not to say that folks living in particular neighborhoods couldn't use that to, um, make applications to grants to do small sections that would eventually connect. And, um, having that, uh, uh, available to us helps coordinate that kind of stuff, so I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you, uh, Director Elliott, Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks Chair, just quickly, and, you know, don't, accepting it is, is the right thing to do, but not just shelving it because really there's in this group, the Sunshine Coast Tourism Group has had this vision, um, obviously it's not realistic in my mind for sure without massive funding that really needs to go elsewhere, but the principles are still the same and I think about that as Director Elliott and others have said, realizing the smaller opportunities, um, you know, the Lund Highway was just paved recently and it would have cost too much to do it this way, but just widening those shoulders and paving them properly has increased the safety for people, seeing more people using their bikes and stuff. And so like, I think it's incre, should be more incremental and maybe revisiting this with a more sort of toned down. Again, we talked a lot about not the Cadillac, we'd love to see these off the path trails and all that, that's cool where we can do it. But where we have to put it next to traffic, I think that's where we need to maybe make those recommendations to say like, maybe we, that is dual.
Nice, Director Lennox, and not seeing any further hand, uh, Director Paul.
Uh, thank you Chair, I just briefly, I, I support the motion, I just wanted to mention a couple things, one is, I think this, uh, you know, the vision, I think we, you know, around the table, I think we s, we like the vision, the idea of having active transportation, we're supportive of, but we wanna be careful what we're committing to and what we're obligating to, and I think we will continue to identify elements that make a lot of sense and endorsing and, and, you know, actively promoting as we've tried for specific locations and so on, so I think when opportunities arise, grants and so on. And I'd like to also mention, maybe, uh, you know, this could be, you know, active transportation will likely come up in our next strategic planning session, you know, probably after the local government elections, where the new board can talk about priorities and and, you know, maybe not this, you know, committing to a big project like this, which is probably out of our ability to, to do, but you know, what, what exactly the priorities are for where active transportation may be advocated for or supported. Um, and I think that, that may be the best way we, we can take moving forward.
Um, now seeing no further hands, we move on the recommendation, all in favor? All opposed, carried unanimously. Um, we have one item of need business, um, which is a notice of motion regarding A V I C C motion.
Thank you Chair, I just wanna mention, you know, I, uh, I, I'm gonna be, uh, it's a notice of motion for bringing forward a resolution regarding, uh, remote ports and, you know, I have a draft wording, I've been working on some wording with, uh, uh, our islands, our local trustee, Tim Peterson, and I'll, I'll read you just the draft there fore clause, just so you know where I'm headed, and this, you know, I'm gonna probably, if the board wants to go forward with this, then, uh, you know, we can get more details, I've got a background on it. Uh, but it's basically to ask the A V I C C and F C M to request Transport Canada and the federal government to cease further efforts to divest remote port facilities, which includes the Falls Bay Wharf, it's the only one in the regional district that fits the definition of remote port facilities. And to continue with their National Marine Strategy commitment to ongoing maintenance of remote port facilities, as well as to provide transition funding for divested facilities that provide ac, critical access to remote communities without capacity to maintain the infrastructure. So I won't, and that, and that's, that latter clause was, uh, developed i- in communication with one of the, the regional directors for, uh, Sunshine Coast Regional District who represents Gambier Island, they've had some major issues with one of their uh, docks, so this is, uh, you know, there's a background on it, there's a bunch of whereas clauses, so I will prob, you know, I'll reach out to our staff, see if the wording is good, try to bring that forward for consideration in the new year.
Thank you, well, notice duly noted, um, Director Lennox, do you have a comment?
Chair, I know we don't usually comment on notice of motion, but I just, uh, I'm in full support, I understand at least some of the elements and I'm looking forward to that, thank you, Director Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Now on to.
I just wanted to take this moment just to advise, uh, the committee and the board uh, that we have the A V I C C report coming forward, just in the new year, and that also, it's good timing to provide a notice of motion because that's when we'll be considering, considering that communication and the deadlines coming up.
Can you share the deadline for, for our turn Chair? To even know what the deadline is.
I can provide a director's notification on that.
Thank you. Um, all right, we are on to question period. Are there questions out there of the committee?
Uh, good day Chair, Galinsky from the peak here, uh, everything is pretty straightforward, I don't have any questions, uh, right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galinsky. Um, we have an in-camera session, and you'll see the motion before we're removing it, and Director Lennox is seconding, so all in favor? Any opposed? Carried, we're going in camera, thank you.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Well, thanks for tuning in to Committee of the Whole. We have no rise in report, so we returned. Good evening.